Hi everyone, welcome back, we're playing Little Guardsmen and I... Yeah, I've learnt a few things, I know now that... If the game doesn't have the save button on the screen, the saving little hourglass, it didn't save, so I'm gonna be careful with that. I also know now that... I should actually use the timer a bit more, the reversal of time, because I haven't used it. And I know I can interrogate people, which I didn't know before, I thought I only could use the... The whip or the truth spray or whatever, so, we learnt a few things. Now we have to go meet the Chester, I think. Oh! Oh wait, no, we're at the jail? Okay, didn't expect that. Every castle needs a creepy dungeon, right? Yeah, true, but why are we here? Yeah, true, ideal for prisoners who only have one arm. I mean, even if you have two arms, you ain't going nowhere if you're stuck in that. Having not seen a bathroom, you become horrified at the realization of what this bucket is for. Mm-hmm, 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 pretty gross. What, how do I open my backpack? Ah, like that, okay. Cute, what's in there? Room 4...
Is this the right place?
Not tonight, this doesn't, not, this seems a bit dodgy.
It is! I mean, ahem... Enter if you dare!
Okay. It's not a 4, because on the door is a... what's that, a 5, 6, 7? So... It's not even the right door. Okay, I can... turn back t- hello? Ah, it's Stryker! It's all of them!
Oh, you dared!
Stryker, Ash, and Ash...
Welcome to my lair of chaos!
Chester... Hello!
It looks like a bedroom.
No, where the bed is. You don't see the bed, so what do you mean? Looks like a torture chamber!
It is his damn bedroom!
Okay...
It can be two things!
Does he sleep on a...
I'm a minimalist!
...stretching rack?
So, this is the Little Guardsmen we've been talking about?
Yes!
Wait, you are, right?
Yeah, it's me. Yes, it's me.
I can't imagine why I wouldn't be.
Good news, little girl, you're going to be working the gate for the foreseeable future.
Because I'm better than my dad?
What? That's not good news, why me? I hardly have a grasp on what I'm doing and I'm barely tall enough to see over the desk!
It's because I can time travel, right?
I see. Then you're free to go!
No, I'm not...
Keep it together, Mal. Listen, little girl, we have eyes and ears all over the city, but the gates have always been a blind spot for me.
Well...
The point is, the safety and security of the sprawl must be preserved and protected, and you might be positioned to help maintain the balance. Do you understand our meaning?
Uh, yeah. Back up, who are you? Oh! Uh... I do get it.
You want me to do favors for you? Use my position at the gate to let in the people that you want in, deny who you don't. Am I on the right track?
Kinda, though.
You're at the station!
What if I refuse? You can't make me do anything I don't wanna do, I'm 12 years old!
Yeah, that just has a fair point.
Damn it, you've got us there! But how about we leave it up to chance? Guess which hand is holding the colored ball and we'll forget about the whole thing!
I don't, I mean, it would make life interesting...
But if you guess it correctly, you agree to do our bidding no matter how nefarious or unreasonable. Sound like a deal?
Not really.
Do I even have a choice?
I don't think so.
Yes, you choose which hand!
Okay.
Not the brightest one, is she?
Um... What's that?
His right hand. Pick his right hand, you can't go wrong when you pick right.
Okay, and she's gonna say pick left?
Malcolm is left-handed, I think, so I'd pick his left hand.
Wonderful, thank you for your help. Um... But he'll double bluff me, so I'll go with the right hand. Ah, see, I don't have to do anything.
Aw, I'm sorry, that was the wrong choice. What you should have chosen was my foot.
Alright, see, there was nothing, okay, yeah, see, I never had a chance.
But you said it would be in your hand!
And what is the foot if not the hand of the leg?
Oh...
You lost fair and square!
No, I didn't.
But...
No...
Oh, and don't worry about your father, we're each quite capable at finding ways to keep him busy, making sure you have to cover for him.
Wow...
But...
That concludes this briefing. We suggest you go back home, rest, and wake up tomorrow prepared to go to your new mundane job, which you will work at for the foreseeable future.
I am 12, at least I hope you pay me well, I don't know.
It's called being an adult!
Yes, but I'm 12!
Keep an eye out for our directives in your daily Guardsmen writ. I trust you won't disappoint us.
Goodbye!
So up until now, it was just the tutorial? Okay, let's say hello.
Why did you turn off the light? She obviously knows where you are. She wouldn't have known that if you didn't start talking!
No, I could, like...
I should have brought another drink.
Yes, maybe, to entertain yourself, say nothing. As if they're no longer there except they are. They say nothing. Oh, we're done here? Okay, then I guess I'm leaving. Okay... I guess I have a job now, wonderful. It's a fun job, though, I mean... Until the novelty wears off, but for now it's a fun job. Maybe they'll keep it from being... what is it called, monotonous, because maybe some new stuff will happen. Hey, Dad, do you wanna tell the kingdom that I don't wanna work?
Boy, what a day! Hey, Arda, pour me a cold one, will ya?
Yeah...
Make that too, Arda. Hey, wait a minute, you're too young to be drinking cold ones.
Yeah, give me a-
Make her some milk, please, Arda.
Give me a cola.
Can it at least be cold?
Yeah...
That depends. How did work go today?
Yeah, kind of alright, I got 2.5 stars.
Did better than a 2-star rating, I can tell you that. I was... What were you doing again?
Gambling.
The bidding of the three royal advisors.
Gambling.
Do you think it's normal that the big names and faces of this city are using us for their own personal and political gain?
After today, I don't know what's normal anymore.
Okay, hey!
There's someone waiting for you in the back alley. Garcia blinkers, Gerby bonbons?
Gar- oh!
Anyways, it's just through that door over there.
Okay. I don't remember what his name was. I can speak to all of them again? Okay, cool. Let's talk to everyone, I, that's how I like to play these games, you have a chat to everyone's the chat.
That Malcolm is a madman, but at least he pays well. And with you working the guard shed, I'm pulling in two salaries. Your milk is on me.
Oh, thanks, so you're taking my money that I earned fair and square and pretending that you're buying me a milk from that?
Hey, we have extra of the daily special today, eggs and oil and lemon. Do you and your dad wanna take it?
That sounds gross.
No, we're not gonna take it.
Oh... Oh, okay, I thought she was gonna say something funny. Hello!
This hat... It is not as fantastic as my previous hat.
It is a good hat.
My journey, it continues.
It is a good hat, sir. Okay. Turn on the-
It's broken, if you can find someone to fix it, be my guest.
Okay. Garby bonkers! Hey, you're participating in capitalism!
Will, you came!
Of course I came, wanna see what you do with the time here.
Welcome to Garby Bunches' Emporium of Wonder!
Garby Bunches!
You're my very first customer!
Oh, yeah, I might be your last customer.
I was actually inspired by watching you alternately help and hinder folks at the gate yesterday.
Really?
And I thought, "Garby, there must be an industry of enterprising individuals supporting the guards." And when I looked around, there wasn't!
Oh, so they're supporting us?
So I met a mage who's got a magic crystal hookup, and now I'm selling Guardsmen tool power-ups!
Wonderful!
If you've got the cash, I can sell you extra power crystals. Both the good kind and the cheap, roll the dice and see what happens kind.
I don't like those.
As well as power-ups for all of your tools.
Okay, so I have to go spend my money here?
It's pricey, but the more crystals you can load into those bad boys, the better!
Yeah, true.
Finally, if you need cash, you can sell me anything you might have taken off of unsuspecting suckers.
Oh...
Here, take a look!
Okay. So I have $40. Power crystals, 30. The fake ones are 10. The decoder ring is so useless. The truth, truth spray is amazing. Um, I can sell these photos, right? I really wanna, what's that? It's his merchant's license, yeah, I can sell it back to him. I don't want that photo, do I need the photos? No, can't I sell him the Cinnabon? Okay, you take this, and this. And then we... So do I have no power crystals slot right now? And I sa- so, purchase an additional power crystal slot for the truth spray. Ah, okay, permanent, and this... Okay. I don't like those, I want to know it's gonna work. I really like the truth spray, so I'm gonna buy an extra slot for the truth spray. But now I don't have any crystals, will I get some more? Hey, bro!
Back for more? Feast your-
Ah, okay, I thought he was gonna chat to me a bit more. Okay. And we're done here, oh, what's in there? Okay, yeah, true, what's in there? Inscribable, okay. I really like the truth spray, I just wanna use the truth spray all the time. Can I go to bed now? Yeah, I think so. Okay.
That Malcolm is a madman-
Okay, okay. Okay, hey!
Maybe one day you can cover for me, here at the bar.
Well, it seems like no one cares about child labor, so I could just do that.
I think I've done everything I need to do, but are you sure you're ready to hit the hay?
Yeah, let's start the new day. Yeah, what are you talking to?
Quiet, you.
To me? Talking to me? Hit the hay! I think we've done everything, right? I really hope I get more crystals. Okay, Seamus McGoblin did a commendable job painting the dungeon walls. Although humble, he really is quite skilled. He never let a drop hit the floor and he did all the edges without using tape. Really high-quality work. It brought a much-needed breath of life into the room where some people wait for execution. Ah, I went down there and it was green, yeah! Seamus went home with his heart and paycheck in one hand, at a bouquet of flowers for his wife in the other. He put his six Goblin children to bed, swept his wife off of her feet, and took her to their room. Their seventh child, Becky McGoblin, is due sometime in spring. Okay. Ooh, this is gonna be bad. The Petradian envoy left the castle guard shed confused as to why he had not been admitted into the sprawl to do his job and announce Prince Phineas pending arrival at the palace. It's because Phineas is an asshole! Frustrated and distracted, he unknowingly ventured off the main road and found himself meandering through a bog where he came up upon the cottage of the mystical Bugle. Bu- Bugle? Playing sage Thaddeus Lucky Lips Brown. He undertook grueling mentorship, which included things like running, flipping, meditation, force lifting, and the dark came of wonder, and obstacle course with Thaddeus strapped to his ba- Oh, no, this is a so-was reference. Weeks later, he continued on his journey back to Petrad and was no better at his instrument than he was when he arrived. Oh, man. Signor Capello Fantastico entered the sprawl and began his quest for the perfect hat. He ventured to every store that sold headgear in the sprawl. Henry's hats, Linda's lids, Homer's haberdashery, the Chapeau Shack, Mindy Millinery, hats, 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 all caps, and even Giddles, Yamuki, Yert. But none of them had the type of hat he was searching for. And he was wearing a good hat! But rest assured, Signor Capello Fantastico will not relent until the top of his head is restored to its former glory. Where did his previous hat go? Mayala! After relaying Praetor Kargan's message to the princess, the Marvog envoy walked past the National Ballet at the sprawl's repertory company rehearsing in the park. Seeing that the ballerinas of the sprawl were doing things completely wrong, the Marvog envoy decided to join in and teach them a thing or two. Now the sprawl's ballerinas are experts in first position and third-degree murder. Oh, no! Since the envoy was distracted, the praetor now got word if... The praetor never got word if the princess received their message, but don't worry, they'll show up anyway, okay? It's a weird one. Sir Beverly. Tonight, entry the fake Sir Beverly, took off his fake armor and got back on his fake horse. Yes, even the horse was fake, I knew that. And went home to his real hut, where he lived with his real mother and wallowed in his very real depression. I'm sorry. Ah, his shield was for sale... With Garby Bunches. Chloe was picked up by a patrol outside of the city limits after having set fire to a hen house with her blowtorch, which spread to a number of surrounding houses, costing the treasury and reducing the city's food supply. What was I supposed to do? She kept trying to kill me! Okay, let's try and do better. Okay, we're safe, it's saving now, so hopefully...
It's news in the morning with me, your news anchor Manuel Mentiroso.
Will you have any new animal?
The chosen suitors for our beloved and newly available Princess Desdemona will be arriving today in the sprawl.
Okay.
Be on the lookout for royal carriages, entourages, and attitudes. Breaking news, the Duchess of Scarborough's prized pet cat Sprankles has passed away at the age of 43.
43?
A representative from the Small Rodent and Budget Coalition shared their condolences, then immediately scampered around without reserve.
Okay. Let's turn off the radio. Okay, I'm gonna work! Going to work today! I've looked at everything, right?
Oh, look, another note!
What does it say? Lil, I'm offering an air-enforce lieutenant Stryker today. Apparently she needs me to... Time how long it takes to run around the entire circumference of the sprawl. Okay, they're keeping him busy, that's why I need to go. Really shouldn't have competed in that hot dog eating contest last night. Do me a favor and go down to the Goblin Ball Arena and place a bet of 30 gold for me after work. I will do no such thing. There's an extra fiver just for you, ah, crying.
You didn't tell me which team to bet on, but my chances can't be any worse than his usually are.
Yeah. Okay, but now I don't have any crystals. Do I get daily allotted crystals? I hope so. The Royal Writ. Expect the arrival of Crown Prince Phineas of Petrad and Praetor Kargan of the Marvog Empire. Don't let your guard down, but do not delay them. Okay? Okay, both of them are arriving. But I don't wanna let in Phineas, he's an asshole. Today is the Goblin Ball, Tri-Goblin Cup semifinal between our beloved sprawl brawlers and the Kaladar Lightning. The bastards. Uh, the bastards, okay, Ash and Ash, okay. There's been a BS report, a bank of the sprawl, regarding a number of unusual transactions involving sports betting. A reminder to the guard force, city officials are forbidden to participate in gray market sports betting. Okay. The guards are hearing talk of increased smuggling. Hmm, be vigilant, watch out for anything that could have a secret compartment. Trust no one, deploy the truth spray, yeah, okay. Okay... Problem is, I have no crystals. I only have 3? That I got from where? Okay. One, two... Oh, I have one of these fake things? Okay, let's go back, let's do one, uh... What is this again? The x-ray, the metal detector. The x-ray is really good, isn't it? One of these, and then the ball wear? No, the metal detector. Um... No... Yeah. Okay. Okay, this is what I have, let's go.
Yes, it is I, little one! Heir to the throne of Petrad! Here before you in the flesh!
I don't like you. Already.
Please, no need to bow or genuflect. No need to avert your eyes, no.
I won't.
For though I am a crowned prince of the realm, I am a humble man.
You aren't.
One of the people, no better even than you, tiny gatekeeper.
You aren't any of that, you're an asshole, that's what I heard.
You'll be glad to know that the opening ceremonies of our newest royal sulfur mine were a complete success.
Okay.
Only four deaths, which is far fewer than the last.
Okay...
No matter, we look forward in Petrad, no sense crying over spilt... Um, well, there it is.
Okay. Um...
Jeez, four dead? At an opening ceremony?
That's a lot.
Yes, tragic, avoidable, but still tragic.
Okay.
Luckily, it wasn't anyone important, a few unskilled laborers and one server, could have been much, much worse.
Okay... Hmm... They said don't do that much, call hit call.
Is he handsome?
Nah...
Well...
Is he charming? They say that he's charming.
He has charm for a prince, I guess.
Guess.
I don't meet a wide range.
Oh, never mind, I will see for myself. Send the prince in at once and for goodness sake, don't talk to him, we wouldn't want you to put him off.
Okay, okay. Okay, when he comes in, okay. You're a cheater, though, but anyway...
And with that, it is off to face the princess and destiny. Before I go, can you spot me a fiver? I'm afraid I left my wallet in my other pants.
What a cheap skate. No.
Hmm. Is it that you don't have the money, or that you don't want to lend it to me?
I don't have it, I'm gonna lie.
Hmm. Not terribly surprising, lower-class working type.
Also, I'm 12!
Besides, look at this dump, I'm amazed you even have enough power to keep the lights on.
He's an asshole.
Never mind, I'll find someone a bit more well-heeled to help me.
Ew, you're so gross, I hope the princess doesn't like you. So about 3 stars, you admitted the Crown Prince of Petrad, but you didn't spot him for 5 bucks. Which is your right. Yeah. Yeah, I don't want, I don't wanna buy, use money to buy crystals. Hey...
Good day, I traveled up here with the convoy what was bringing Prince Phineas to the sprawl.
And then?
I'm not staying long, just need a place for tonight before I head back to Petrad.
Okay. Hmm, let's ask you a question?
I was hired to come along with the convoy in case anything broke down on the way, in case repairs were needed on any of the equipment or transport.
Okay, that sounds-
The prince doesn't exactly travel light. 3 carriages of wardrobe changes alone. To be honest, I don't get to the sprawl often, too many mages round these parts for my liking.
Yeah. Um... You seem nice. Yeah.
I'm sure they were glad to have you as a personal insurance policy.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'd go that far. If they didn't absolutely need to hire someone to make sure the prince was here bright and early, they surely would not have.
Okay.
Wouldn't spend a penny on their dying aunt, the pomp family.
Oh my gosh. So, what did they say? Immediately use the truth spray? The guards are hearing talk of smuggling. Okay, so truth spray. Or an x-ray. Truth spray?
I have been completely forthright this entire time. You really should be more trusting of people and not waste your precious crystals on nonsense like this.
Oh... Oh... Okay, that didn't feel nice, okay, admit. Yeah, come on, you can go inside. Is he mad that I truth sprayed him?
I thank you for this respite for the evening. I'm certainly glad I don't have to head all the way back to Petrad tonight.
Yes, okay, you can be a-
By the way, do you know of a good inn nearby?
Um...
No better place than the Twisted Sisters Tavern!
Yeah!
Not a classic beauty, but she'll get you where you need to go.
Yeah, I can recommend our own one.
My kind of establishment. I'll see you there!
Yeah, we can have a glass of milk together. Nice, there are a lot of things falling apart in the sprawl, and your pleasant rapport may lead to him fixing a thing or two for you. Nice, nice, nice. Ohhh, no. Who are you? Oh, no. What are you mourning? Sprankles. Oh, that's so fake. That's so fake, what are you here to do? The cat, or what? Oh, it's the cat, ah, okay... Why, it all sounds like fake.
The service was held in the Duchy of Scarborough, but the, um... Remains are being interred at Saint Euphrigenia's pet cemetery here in the sprawl.
Euphrigenia's?
Sprankles loved visiting her friends at Saint Euphrigenia's!
Euphrigenia's? That sounds horrible. Um, I doubt you, actually.
Why is Sprankles...
Oh, no!
They don't wanna answer any questions.
Why is you-know-who being laid to rest here?
Yeah, that's a good question.
We do not have a pet cemetery suitable for such an entry in the Duchy of Scarborough.
Really?
What exactly is a duchy?
Yeah, I don't know either.
It is a parcel of land under the purview of a duke or duchess. Scarborough is the duchy controlled by her grace, the Duchess of Scarborough.
Is that the lady with the purple earrings?
Present!
Oh.
And it is a far nicer duchy than some, for instance, the Duchy of Kaladar.
Oh, okay, we have a bit of prejudice.
Kaladar, what a dump!
Alright. Okay, we're gonna x-ray you guys, because I feel like something's, something's going on here with our case. Yeah, what's in there? Give it, give it, give it... Give it me. Is it just, uh, ash, ashes?
What's this, then?
It's a dead cat.
That's dust.
What do you mean?
Of course it is, there's a corpse in there after all.
No, pixie dust.
Oh.
It's an illegal narcotic used by layabouts and low-goodnesses.
So they're smuggling!
What on earth is it doing inside Sprankles?
They're smuggling!
I confess, I've been holding this inside for too long!
Eric, you're a smuggler!
I was approached by a weird guy who tricked me into smuggling illegal pixie dust into the sprawl for him! He was holding the ball with his foot!
Oh my goodness!
Who does that?
Ball with his foot?
I plead guilty, your honor, on the grounds of I did it!
Okay...
I'm not a judge, you know?
Yeah, I know.
Oh!
But I'll leave it to the courts to deal with this. The rest of you, pack up your dead cat and be on your way.
Yeah... Okay, cool, that's nice. Oh, so I admitted, okay, so if, if I get, if I interrogate them enough...
Alright, have fun burying your cat.
I make a decision, okay?
We shall.
We shall, at least-
Sprankles will be so happy at Saint Euphrigenia's, I just know it!
Can we stop saying Saint Euphrigenia's?
Thank you, my dear, Sprankles thanks you!
Okay, I thank Sprankles.
Oh, good!
Okay.
And that's how you x-ray your way to success!
Nice! Okay, um, maybe I'm a bit too smug, but I'm quite pleased. You did a sting! You foiled the drug smuggler bringing narcotic-grade pixie dust into the sprawl inside the casket of a dead cat. What a weird day, good job! Okay, I agree, I'm quite happy with how that went. Yo, who are you?
Phew, I made it! Listen, I gotta get in there. The whole team came through a while ago and the game is about to start, we all good?
And you are...
Yeah, who are you?
You're kidding, right? Come on, I'm Seruna Goodfoot, the Star Troll Goblin Ball player for Kaladar Lightning.
Kaladar...
I don't have time for games right now, I gotta get to the stadium and win us the game!
Okay, but there really is no time, let me see, what was about the, um... Where is the... Today is the Goblin Ball, Tri-Goblin between our beloved sprawl brawlers and the Kaladar Lightning. Okay, so let me call Ash and tell her about this person.
Oh yes, Seruna, I heard she was running late for the game. Something about an unfortunate detour at the last minute.
Okay.
Such a shame, because if a team doesn't win today, then I won't have to owe the mayor of Kaladar 5 barrels of fine sprawly and mulled wine.
Because if her team doesn't win... Then I won't owe... Ah, so she means I should stall her?
Do me a favor, keep her busy until the game is over, will you?
Oh, no! Oh, no, okay, so we keep talking?
Come on, the big Goblin Ball game starts in 30 minutes! My stupid personal driver had to take a detour to get here. What more do you want me to say?
Oh, no... Uh... I don't wanna be mean, she seems nice.
Is it really your personal driver's fault, or is it that you have a hard time dealing with pressure?
Oh...
You sound just like my psychiatrist.
Yeah...
Personal driver, psychiatrist? Is there anything you don't have?
Oh my gosh...
I don't have time to talk to you all day!
Yeah... Am I gonna be mean and keep her here for Ash? Maybe, I don't know... I keep talking, I keep talking?
Can we move this along? I'm the starting thrower and the team needs me to wipe the floor with those pathetic sprawl brawlers. They're such a horrible team, I bet we could win even without my lucky second sweatband.
What lucky second sweatband?
Where is it?
This lucky second sweatband.
Yeah? I'm taking it. Nice.
Hey, you can't take that, I needed to win the big game today!
I can, of course, take it.
I have to take it, it's- I have to take it. It's evidence.
Evidence? What are you talking about?
Evidence that you don't need some lousy sweatband to win a game.
Oh!
You just need to believe in yourself.
Why am I hyping her?
Huh, I never thought about it like that before.
Why am I hyping her up? You got a sweatband. Okay, this will fetch a high price. Yeah, true. Okay, let's let her in. She's fine. I think she's fine. Okay, you can go play the game. Ash will be mad, though. Ash will be mad. But Ash is, they're all just fake and rude people, so whatever. This felt right in my gut.
Thanks! Now to wipe the floor with those lousy Sprawl Brawlers!
Ah, but now I know the Sprawl Brawlers are gonna lose, so I can go bet against them.
When you hear the crowd cheer on my name, you'll know it's for me.
Well, duh.
Yeah, true, that was stating the obvious. You admitted the star player of the Kaladar Lightning, but without her lucky second sweatband, it's anyone's game. Okay, so I did try and throw her off a little bit, but I was still nice. Hey, who are you?
Greetings! I am Praetor Cargan of the Marvog Empire. I believe you met my envoy, the angry warrior with the head in the bag.
Yeah? That's not you. No, that's not you.
She would have come by this gate to announce my arrival.
It's not you.
I demand you let me pass immediately.
No.
Qua apla!
Nope, you're fake. That's not you. Nope. No.
Why do you pester me with questions? I am a very important royal figure, and I must enter your city to meet your princess and marry her.
Nope.
Now let me be gone, child. Quack, black!
Nope. Nope.
A thousand apologies. I imagine you don't like to be kept waiting.
I understand these are only routine procedures.
Um, you are not, you're not correct. This is, that's not her. She was beautiful, that's not her. I'm gonna truth spray you. Yeah, cuz that's not right.
I must resist the urge too. Need to focus. I am Praetor Cargan of the Marvog Empire, and not some copycat looking to get into the city and use Praetor's likeness to scorch my hotel rooms.
Yeah, exactly.
Phew, I did it. Now let me through, child! Qua apla!
No. No, there's a copycat here. Striker. Wait, so what do we do with copycats? Um... Ash, it's called Ash.
According to my sources, the Praetor's carriage still hasn't passed the Swampland outpost.
Yeah.
The Marvog are always so caught up in battle and war. I wouldn't put it past them to have sent a decoy carriage in case they got attacked. It's very difficult to tell what the Marvog are up to. You have to use your own judgment on this one.
Yeah, no, I don't think you're the right one. Sorry, girl, you're not coming in. I don't know if you're...
But I am the prettler!
You're not. You really aren't.
What on earth are you doing? Since when are you exercising independent thought? I don't care what your opinion of them is. If they're the real Praetor Cargan, then let them through at once, is that clear?
But it's not. They're not the real Praetor.
You've made a powerful enemy today, little girl. You'll soon feel the wrath of an entire empire. Qua plort and goodbye!
You are not the right person. You saw through the old fake Praetor routine from a mile away. Who does she think you are? Someone who can't see through the old fake Praetor routine? Psh, amateur. Yeah, come on, we could clearly see she wasn't the right one. Ooh!
Little warrior, I am weary after a long journey, and I am not used to being made to wait in a lineup. Let me pass on my way. I must rest before I meet her princess in order to win her hand and bring honor to my people.
Yes, you can go through.
This seems more legit. This may seem like a strange request, but would you mind saying your famous battle cry for me?
Qua plaa! You mean, quapla!
Nice, that sounds great.
That's the one.
Yeah, you can go through.
I would hope that my stunning war cry is sufficient to being granted entry immediately.
Yes. Yes, let's go. I'm not even gonna question you. But maybe that was a mistake. I don't know, she seemed legit.
And thus I truly begin my quest to marry Princess Desdemona and bring a generation of prosperity to the Marvog Empire.
Definitely.
You, little warrior, will have a footnote in history for this encounter. For victory, for Marvog, quapla!
Nice. Yay! Qua plaa! After the impostor, it was very clear this visiting dignitary was on the level. Exemplary job granting an immediate entry, no one could accuse you of unnecessarily delaying anyone. Yes, exactly. Yes, I'm pleased. That went well. Done! Work is easy. I think I scored quite well, didn't I? Yes! Ah, amazing! Due to your good job performance, you were paid twenty gold. Lovely! Thank you, I need money. Okay, you admitted the Crown Prince, um... Yeah, I didn't spot him for fiber. Let's see, yeah, he's in. You did, yeah, they were in, but the, the one who tried to smuggle is gone. Yeah, cool, cool, cool. I think I did really well. I really think I did well. I hope I did well. Ah, nice, okay. It's saving. Okay, so, um, I think I will leave it here for today. Thank you so much for watching. Uh, please like the video if you liked the video. Uh, I think this game is really interesting, and I, I think like, it has like a bit of a loop concept, of course. But then I also think it keeps changing things up. I didn't use the time turner yet, but like, it keeps adding small elements into it so that you're not just constantly stuck in that loop by the gate, and the characters are really interesting and fun, so, yeah. Uh, please subscribe to my channel, cuz I will keep playing these lovely and beautiful games, and I would love for you, um, to come with me on this lovely journey, yeah? So, have a lovely day further. Take care of yourself, and I will see you in the next one. Bye-bye!